Okay, I think we're ready to begin. The time is 6:23 PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Mattson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, we are delayed in starting this evening due to an executive session that was held to discuss personnel and other issues. I will lead the invocation this evening. If everyone could please join me in a moment of silence as we keep the following families in our thoughts and prayers. The Moore-Davis family, the Bonner family, the Williams-Pain family, the Chisholm family, and the Livingston family. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Mattson. Thank you. We do not have any communications this evening, but at this time, we would like to open the floor for courtesy of the floor. I will begin with the far right section, and just a reminder to everyone, if you could please state your name, your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please state the vicinity in which you live. And a friendly reminder, you will have two minutes to share your remarks. So let's begin with the far right section. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing no one, I will move to the next right section. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing no one, I will move to the middle section. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment?
Just a housekeeping matter. Once again, I was unable to hear this when it was played out on Channel 20, so I would ask members of council as well as members of the public to please speak into the mic. My name is Les Ford. I live at 2033 Bellevue Road, Harrisburg. I understand the two-minute rule, but I beg the indulgence of the body politic. Those of us who don't learn from our mistakes are destined to repeat them. Those of us who are, don't learn from our mistakes are doomed to repeat them. Last week and the week before, we dealt with an external problem. An external entity came in and did something that the citizenry did not think was particularly useful to the citizenry, so there was a great brouhaha about that. That external entity was Pendant. That project was a State Street project. It was a matter of they coming in to do something to us. Tonight, I want to briefly highlight a formative situation which can do that again, except it is not a "they," it is "us." We are on the verge, I believe, of doing it to ourselves this time. So when we have a situation that we feel is dangerous or detrimental to our body politic, we need to forthrightly and thoroughly examine it and discuss it as a body politic. Years ago, when I first came to the city and began to observe what happens in body politic and in Harrisburg, I heard and locked on to two fundamental aspects, organizations within municipal government that you don't mess with. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Those two foundational organizations were Public Safety and Public Works. Public Safety and Public Works. If they are working, you don't mess with them. You do not engage in revolutionary activities around those functions. They have to be in place intact and functioning well for the benefit of all in the city, regardless of whether or not you agree with them. So I briefly want to take an example from the Reed administration. That's when I first came here.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you. Harrisburg found itself in a situation of having to be taken over by the state via a receivership. We got into that situation because the then-mayor took on responsibilities that I believe were beyond the scope of his power, but we'll leave that alone. To bring in people to formulate and create and run an incinerator, we all know what happened as a result of that. But it was, this is the central point, it was Public Works. It should never have been done. And the citizens of Harrisburg should have stepped up at that time. We weren't there then, but we are here now. So when something comes up having to do with either Public Works or Public Safety, I for one am going to speak out. We wound up, as a result of that, having to sell off resources, valuable resources. We sold off our water resources, our municipal parking, and our trash disposal. We were forced to do that because of bad decisions that were made here in Harrisburg relative to Public Works. I hope we've learned a lesson from that. We don't want to get into a situation of unforced errors. If we do the same thing again, we can expect that kind of results. If we fail to do things, we can expect that kind of result. So I am offering an entreaty tonight to the municipal government as well as our citizenry to address the situation that has come up relative to Public Works. I know you cannot discuss personnel issues, but you can discuss organizational and structural issues. This is an organizational and structural issue. It's organizational behavior. It's systems analysis. It is organizational analysis. So from that point of view, I think City Council has an obligation to address this situation. We don't need to find ourselves creating what they call in sports as unforced errors in the military, self-inflicted wounds, or more colorfully in the military clusters. We still are in receivership as a result of the situation that occurred in the 90s. We do not want to pile additional detrimental situations onto Harrisburg now that we are sort of coming out of receivership. But understand, the state still has control. The courts still have control of some of the functions and organizational behavior of Harrisburg, so please keep that in mind. So now we come to tonight's looming crisis from my point of view, that is Public Works. As far as the personnel issue is concerned, I won't touch that, but I will touch on the organizational behavior of departments and what we expect organizationally from the standpoint of business structure. We expect there to be a chain of command. We expect there to be accountability. We expect there to be input from those other crucial organizations that touch on that, namely City Council and the administration. But that has to be done in a structured, professional, and businesslike manner. If it is not, then it is up to City Council to step in and address that. If we, the citizens of Harrisburg, do not take note of this, we will find ourselves in the same situation in which we are looking for someone else to come in and fix it for us. And then we will all be up in arms about someone else coming in and telling us what to do. Right now, we have an opportunity to get in front of that, to address it ourselves, and the buck stops here. You all are responsible for ensuring that a professional and accountable mechanism is put in place to address our current issue. Again, without touching on the particulars, I will simply say that it is a vital function. We should not mess with it if it is not broken. If it is broken, or if it is slightly out of order, we should address that in a professional and businesslike manner and not overstep our bounds or authorities, either as citizens, members of council, or members of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Please speak into the microphone.
My name is Eleanor Richard. And quite a few of us have a main concern and feeling for the hiring and praising of Nathaniel Spriggs and the firing and demeanor way of which Nathaniel Spriggs was fired. Many coworkers, family members, and friends stated that it was disheartening and unwarranted when a dedicated person like Mr. Spriggs was laid off and kicked to the side. And the main concern to him, what was their reasoning? What is the true reasoning? Pulling down. Mr. Spriggs, when he came back into the city, when he was begged to come back, has done a lot for the vicinity. Where I live, I've lived here for 20 years. A lot of our roads have not been touched and fixed, and they were. A friend of mine was burned out a few months ago. And at the time, I'll just say she contacted the mayor and has not heard anything yet. I felt sorry for her, and I knew that Mr. Spriggs worked for the city, so I called him. In three days, he was able to assist her and help her in more ways than one. It's kind of heartbreaking, too. But someone, please tell me, how do you praise a person? How do you put them on the highest stack? How do you ask them to do this and do that, and then to turn around in the next breath and kick them to the curb? I mean, I know we all have our rights and likes and dislikes and have it, but when it comes to business, it's okay. And for some reason, need to be your relative of mine, and whatever happens, happens, and you do all the wrong things. And I know you're doing all the wrong things. So what I got to do is warn you, let you know that you're going to be either one or two things in the work field that you and I are working in. I will talk to you, warn you, suspend you, and then the next step is to fire you. And because of our work situation, and maybe and/or your relative is a higher power and does not agree because you're doing something wrong and you're not supposed to, besides to chastise me and take me out, you don't do that. It's more business. It's more professional. It's more understanding. You don't take it personal nor do you take it politically, but you work in the right manner, and you do the blessing right thing to the right people. Even with the snow removal, for 12 years, he has done so much there too as well.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
So my time has expired, and I thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, council. Patricia Strenger from Allison Hill. I was at the meeting where you were discussing, it was a position in Public Works, someone to be in charge of the 250 vacant lots that need to be cleaned around the city. I read in the paper where the Pittsburgh City Council is contacted by the Center for Employment Opportunities, they have where they can put people returning, citizens, maybe they've been incarcerated and everything. They pay, this doesn't come out of the budget. They pay the salary for these people to come and clean up. And I think we want Harrisburg to be a clean city, so I'm suggesting that we look into that opportunity, that we can work with the Center for Employment Opportunities and have some of these returning citizens available to, can clean up, help clean up these vacant lots. It would provide an opportunity for them to return to society and everything. The other thing I would speak on is the removal of the Public Works person. We have to be professional on this. How can you get fired for doing your job? You know, there was, there was nothing that he had done against any rule or anything, so you can't let personal things interfere in this. And, you know, when you're doing a good job, let them go. If there's some sort of thing on it with somebody's relative, you know, you have to. You have to do what's right. And, and when you don't do what's right, people look on, is this city cooperating? Are you operating correctly? So I want council to look at that particularly because that could have put us in a libel situation. So thank you for your time, and please consider that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ed Battingalow from 1819 North Second Street, where I've lived for over 33 years in the city of Harrisburg. I have contacted all of the council members individually, collectively, about the sewage problem we have in the city. I want to make sure that ultimately, everyone is aware of that for a couple of reasons. Number one, when it rains and we get sewage in our basement, ultimately, this is not just rainwater in the basement like people think, and I've expressed this to you. This is raw sewage because we have a single sewage system. Okay? Number two, evidently, from all my neighbors that I've been in contact with just over the past week, dozens, the reality is that it's gotten worse since the Third Street work was done and now the Second Street work was done. This is, this is the first time my basement has ever been flooded, except for the ice flood of January 96 and Lee in 2011. And coincidentally, within weeks of closing, the storm system work on Second Street, the Second Street repairs, I get sewage in my basement. And I'm telling you, it is sewage. The smell, the color, it literally took away the quality of our life, along with all the hours that myself and my family spent doing this, ultimately a week of our time. And I want to let you know, it's not just me. In fact, I'm late to this, but there's a significant number of homes in Midtown and old uptown Harrisburg that suffer from sewage in their basements when it rains. Some claim every time it rains. Again, right now, I have a list of about five dozen people through Facebook contacts and whatever. I have attended, okay, thank you for your time. Pardon me?
We do have, thank you. Thank you for your comments, and I know that we did all receive your emails. I would ask that if you have a moment, if you wouldn't mind saying after to talk to Councilman Mattson relating your issue. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing no one, anyone in the left section?
Good evening, council members. Laura Harding, 2200 block of North Third Street. My first comments are going to be on behalf of myself, and my second comments are going to be as president of Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United. My own comments are, with respect to the time limits, the Office of Open Records states that the average time limit offered by municipalities is three minutes, and that is what they recommend. That's the average across the state. However, a local municipality, another local municipality in this area sets their time limit at five minutes. I don't think that two minutes is enough, especially when it's not enforced for everyone across the board. Now, as my next comments are speaking as president of Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United and are endorsed by their Board of Directors. The Catherine Hershey School has two items on the agenda tonight. The first is Bill 8, 2022, and the second is Resolution 35, 2022. Catherine Hershey School is residing, will be built in our neighborhood boundaries of Uptown and Camp Curtain. The Catherine Hershey School engaged with our community early on in the process, and I would like to make the council aware of that. They were very open to hearing all of our suggestions and kept the lines of communication open as always. So we support both their ordinance amendment and their resolution. However, there is some concern from some residents on Minnick Street who will be losing one or two parking spaces, and due to the design of limitations within the design that can't be changed, we would ask, they are asking that the permit parking be established on Minnick Street for residents only. And if that's something that can be done, I don't know which council member per view that falls under, but that is what they were requesting.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
I'm going to continue, okay? In contrast, I'm speaking on behalf of a community organization. In contrast, David Peffley, whose Resolution 14, 2022 is on the agenda, did not engage with the community at all regarding the project on Jefferson Street. In fact, as I stated before, there was opposition from the community to this project, and he was, did not open any lines of communication regarding that project. In addition, he has dozens of code violations that are in many of the Magisterio District Courts going back years, with him recently pleading guilty to many of those in Justice Sonia McKnight's court, and now owes thousands of dollars in fines just for those dockets. However, there are still countless others open that are inactive in Bianca's Court and some other district justices' court that have not been adjudicated yet. In addition, David Peffley is a rooming houses are haven for gun violence, particularly the one on Seventh Street in Camp Curtain, and that disaster of a fire on Seventh Street with burning cars underground is owned by David Peffley and is now an environmental disaster for our community. This is the second environmental justice disaster in Camp Curtain in the last year. We are strongly opposed, as a community, to David Peffley being approved for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 block of State Street. I'm not going to address the termination of the Public Works Director. What I am going to address is during his tenure with the city of Harrisburg, his current tenure, he has been very responsive to the needs in my neighborhood. I have been able to get things done. He's always there early in the morning, and he returns telephone calls. This week, I thought it was ironic. He wasn't there. And if any of you drive past 19th and State, we have a public trash can. And yes, the public, as well as some of the neighbors, think it's their trash can. And we have trash piled up this high at 19th and State. I'd like for this issue to be resolved quickly because we can't let trash pile up in the neighborhoods, and we need someone to be able to go to and address that. In addition to that, at 19th and State, for some reason, my trash wasn't picked up. All I know is, regardless of the issue of the termination, I know when Mrs. Spriggs was there, I could call and get these things resolved. I need a name. I need a telephone number because I'm tired of looking at that big mound of trash at 19th and State. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. If you too, if you wouldn't mind waiting after the meeting to speak to Councilman Mattson, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section or the rear that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Council members, are there any revisions to the minutes for the legislative session of June 14, 2022? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to our sole committee report this evening that will come from Chair Ross on the work session of June 21, 2022. Chair Ross?
Thank you, President Bowers. And good evening, everyone here in person and on Zoom. On June 21, 2022, the Parks and Rec and Enrichment Committee met to discuss Resolutions 31 of 2022, Resolutions 32 of 2022, Resolutions 33 of 2022, and Resolution 34 of 2022. Resolution 31 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram for up to $250,000 for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase II of the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park. Resolution 32 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Community Recreation and Conservation Planning Subprogram for up to $100,000 to help fund a Harrisburg City Parks Master Plan. Resolution 33 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a landowner guarantee agreement with Capital Area Green Belt Association, allowing the Capital Area Green Belt Association to construct respiratory enforced buffers on the city's property. Resolution 34 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Rivers Conservation Subprogram for up to $1 million for funds to restore and rehabilitate the stream bed of Spring Creek. Resolutions 32, excuse me, Resolutions 31, 32, and 34 of 2022 are three resolutions that were already discussed and passed by City Council during the legislative session of April 6 of 2022. They have been resubmitted to City Council because DC and AR's C2P2 subdivision program has asked the city to resubmit and vote on all resolutions with the DC and AR resolution paperwork completed and attached. Resolution 33 of 2022 was about Mr. Director Baker and Ms. Follier explained that this grant would allow the Green Belt Association the ability to place buffers on the green belt with no cost to the city. For everyone's clarification, buffers help slow down the path of water and helps keep water clean. For Resolutions 31 of 2022 and 32 and 34, my fellow council members had questions on the Phase II of the Chutes and Ladders Playground, such as, what is the final phase of the Chutes and Ladders Playground? Are there matching funds or no matching funds for Phase II of the Chutes and Ladders Playground? And are any city funds going to be used? And what were some safety precautions? The answer to those questions came from Director Baker and Ms. Walmer. They explained that the Chutes and Ladders Playground is its own phase and that Phase II will deal with the top lot and extra parking lot, and that the matching funds will, has already been given to the city in 2021 for $150,000, and that this grant for, excuse me, for and that this grant for, excuse me, for Resolution 31 of 2022 would match those funds given in 2021. DCNR usually only allows $250,000 to be applied for, but they are allowing the city to apply for an extra $275,000 if they will place $5,000 in. That is the money the city would be giving up in order to get the $275,000. For Resolution 33 of 2022, my fellow council members had a question concerning the legal relationship between CAGA, which is Capital Area Green Belt Association, and the city of Harrisburg, and with the liability piece if something was to go wrong. CAGA must show they have permission from the city of Harrisburg to do the work because Harrisburg may not have the ability to do so, which there is documentation to show that. Therefore, DCNR gives CAGA a grant, and we, as the city of Harrisburg, agree to allow CAGA to do work on the property that we own. If damages do come about, the city is responsible, but CAGA would be responsible to take care of those damages. I recommend my fellow council members to vote yes again on Resolutions 31 of 2022, Resolutions 32 of 2022, and Resolution 34 of 2022 to continue the facelift of the city parks and the equability of our park in the city. I also recommend my fellow council members vote yes for Resolution 33 of 2022 so that the Capital Area Green Belt Association can construct the forest buffers on the city's property in order to slow water flow down and continue to provide clean water. And that concludes the business of the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ross.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for a point of clarification from Councilwoman?
Yes, it was about the, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr.
It's just on Resolution 31. I'm informed that at the meeting, but I was not there, that there was discussion of changing the amount on the application to 275,000. That would have to be done with a motion tonight when you do it.
Thank you. In the ratifying that piece too. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ross, and thank you for that clarification. We will now move, we have one ordinance for first reading. That's Bill 8 of 2022. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 8, 2022. An ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg portions of Wallace Street, Maltke Street, and Delaware Street within the block bounded by Pfeffer Street, North Seventh Street, Minnick Street, and North Sixth Street pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Bill 8 of 2022 will move to the Public Works Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinance for a final passage this evening. We will now move to resolutions. First, we have Resolution 14 of 2022. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 14, 2022. A resolution approving a preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan to rehabilitate an existing building into a 22-unit multifamily dwelling and construct a parking lot with 20 off-street parking spaces.
Thank you. Council members, are there any comments, questions, or concerns related to Resolution 14?
I would like to request that they suspend the rules. The applicant is here and may be able to provide additional information.
Sure, not a problem. There is a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will defer to Chair Daniels.
Is the applicant here and willing and able to address questions about this application? So do you mind coming to the front?
You need to turn the button.
It's the gray button. There you go. And please don't forget to speak into the mic. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, David Pefley.
And since you were last here, you've been found to be in violation of at least 80 violations of our city code ordinances. Have you redressed any of those violations since then?
Yes, I have. Some of them were appealed, some of them were taken care of, some of them were paid. And I have some ones I have to go to court on also, yes. So mostly all of them are taken care of.
When you say taken care of, can you be a little bit more specific? Which ones did you actually repair the properties for? Which ones you're in the process of scheduling repairs for? Could you please elaborate a little bit more?
Some of them we paid the fines for. Some of them I paid for the for the yearly renewals for the apartments. There was other ones that I paid fines for, and then some of them are being appealed right now.
So it would be helpful if you could be a little bit more precise.
Like, do you want me to pick one out, for example, and tell you what we did? Or?
It would be good if you could, of the ones you have.
Some of, for example, I had ones that we didn't fill out the rental contracts for the past couple of years. Okay, those were filled out, and those were paid. And we communicated this week for some other ones that were not done, which are being paid this week also. And that was quite a few thousands of dollars. Okay, so those are being paid, and they're being caught up to date.
And the ones that relate to refuse and grass and?
Those were cleaned up. There was one, for example, I had on Seventh Street, which we put a sidewalk in, and we have to put a curb in, which we're working on as we speak, and we have permits for it and everything, and that's another one, for example. Everything, we're doing everything the city wants us to do to get in compliance with everything.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Pefley? Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
Why were you out of compliance with so many, with 80 citations? Why weren't you not keeping your properties up to code, up to date? And but now you want another property? So how are we, I know this is a couple part question, how are we as a city, as city council, to believe that, given you another property, you are going to keep it up to code and standards of what our residents deserve to live in?
The biggest issue was I buy properties, I fix them up, okay? Then I sell them to people that move in from other areas, okay? And I sell them to them, and I hold the mortgage like a bank, okay? And I was under the impression that I was being like a bank, and I would not have to file the monthly, or I mean, the yearly and the annual $75 fees. Okay, that's about 70% of what the issues were, okay? And it doesn't work that way with the city. Okay, even though I'm the bank and it was holding the mortgages, I'm still responsible for the people, what they do in their houses, okay? So therefore, I had to pay the fees, and that's what I did not pay, the annual fees. It's like I said, that was for 70% of the properties.
In other words, you were giving out mortgages to people?
Yes, I sell someone, I would sell someone a house, and I would hold the mortgage as a bank, okay?
To be clear, you're talking about a lease.
It's an agreement of sale. It's an official agreement of sale.
You're still on the deed in Duffin County. So it's listed in, your title is listed in.
That is correct. That is correct. Yes, so that was 70% of them.
No further questions?
And just for what it's worth, also, I have a lot of properties in the city. My taxes are paid, my water bills that I am responsible for are paid, my sewer bills, all my bills are paid.
Thank you.
Yeah, this question is for the solicitor. In regards to the outstanding or these violations that are in question, what legally does that have to do, or how does that correlate with the land development plan in front of us?
It's a good question. This is the question of what, when does council have discretion? And it's a tight line. Technically, there are two corporations, three corporations, and that are titled.
Any of these that I have?
Yeah.
I have 11 or 12.
I mean, that are cited directly. It matters from a legal perspective because they're different legal entities, right? And a different legal person. And so it matters who the applicant is on this application. It matters who the entity is that is cited for a particular thing. One entity is not held responsible for the other entity's citations. But here, it seems to be a universal operation by Mr. Pefley, as I understand it. This is just how he structures his business and does them. He has come to the courts himself for each of these proceedings. My senior deputy was, I think, at 80-some hearings this May and June. It is my understanding there is either nine or 12 outstanding citations still needing a hearing. I don't know off the top of my head which entities are on them. The, from codes, is my understanding, the most serious issue is one that is related to what they describe as they think is a dump area that's not permitted. I believe there was a hearing on that, just on the fencing, but not on the actual content. I think that's scheduled with Mr. Zozos, I think. Is that where that citation is?
It's in his area.
Yeah. It's under a bridge, is my understanding. So none of that has to do with any of that in terms of this particular spot, except what you're being asked for at some point is some discretion on consolidating a lot and authorizing someone to proceed with a land development plan that puts more units in whose operation did not have, who had to, you know, had to be brought into compliance. The compliance issue really just came from the councilwoman's question at the original hearing on this matter. And then we contacted Mr. Pefley and his gentleman Dale, who was with him on this project. And that's what we've been doing, is trying to get them to compliance through the codes office and get these old matters addressed. I cannot speak to why they were not addressed and why hearings weren't scheduled, other than that service had not been accomplished. The certified mail had not been accepted, some going back four years. So technically, no, they don't have to do anything. It's within the council's discretion. I would say yes, you know, whether at this point in time, it's up to the council. They have, I think, three options. They approve it, they disapprove it, they continue the matter till their compliance is satisfied from the council's perspective. But those are the three options before the council for this.
Any other questions?
I'm thinking, so I guess I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if this land development plan is in compliance before I make this decision or vote. And it sounds like it technically is.
I believe that is what the people from planning sat here and told you at the original hearing on this original application, that they had satisfied the obligations on this plan, and it was approved with conditions at the planning commission.
Okay, and did the planning commission, were they aware of these other violations?
I do not believe so. But I don't know. It's been many, 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 many months. I just don't, I don't know.
As a member of the planning commission, I can tell you no.
So in an instance when this violation is, wasn't the bodies that were to regulate this weren't aware of this violation that is brought before council, is there any other, in your knowledge, what have other councils done in situations like this?
There are times under the missile planning code where there is, matters are returned to the planning commission. And actually, when you see the title, that Harrisburg is sort of unique in many ways for many things. We do preliminary slash final subdivision plans. Many places have a preliminary plan that goes to the governing body to vote. The final plan just goes to the planning commission. So could you make a motion to send it back to the planning commission to see if those additional details mattered to them? I think you could make that motion. I frankly can't tell you if there's case law on it because frankly, the questions never came up that I've seen. Doesn't mean it hasn't happened somewhere else.
So I think it's unfortunate the regulatory bodies that were responsible for checking these things didn't have that information prior to it coming to us.
The hearings occurred after. He was found guilty after the application was submitted, and even after our last after it came to council.
But I think the suggestion that Mattson may be making is that would the planning commission have put different conditions on the application? If they were aware there were, you know, on the upwards of 100 outstanding citations? And the answer is, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, because I understand it, planning didn't even know anything about these violations.
Their office, yet their office doesn't deal with them. It was the codes office.
I personally would like to make the motion to send this back to the.
We're just having a discussion.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm not gonna make the motion. I'm just saying I'd be interested in that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I guess one question as far as the suggestion of sending it back to planning, wouldn't that still affect the timeline we have to?
It would.
Right, so if we send it back, it could be deemed approved automatically. So I think that's.
No, you're correct. So right now, if you all remember during our last communication with Mr. Pefley, he agreed to a 30-day extension from the deemed approved deadline that we have to take action. So since then, the new deemed approved deadline is July 2. We have to take action today.
My name's Dale Hare. I'm architect for the project here with KD3 Design Studio. We did submit an email to Mr. Grover stating that we would be in favor of extending it. It would have to be 90 days because we understand you don't meet over the summer. Therefore, we could get all of these issues together and show that then when we meet at a workshop meeting, that we are, you know, what everything is in compliance. And if there is anything else seen at that time, we would have it in there. But we did make that suggestion to Mr. Grover. I believe we've been communicating here in the last couple of days. If that helps any.
Councilwoman Green, do you have any other questions?
No, I really don't have many questions. I think it's, for me, quite disturbing that it took needing to get an extension before anything was answered or before you went to court for any of this or before anything was paid. So for me, that's not in good faith. For me, I kind of go, well, if this is approved, we end up in the same situation that you don't answer that you may not answer service and that things just continue to go on and on until you need something else again, and you're before us again. So to me, it's not in good faith, and it doesn't speak to me voting in favor of this. If it's pretty much like, once you get what you want, I don't think you'll be back before us again or back before the courts again until you have to be, and that's just my personal opinion.
May I say something? May I say something? Like I did say, I do have a lot of properties in the city, okay? And I spend a lot of money in the city. And I think you're going to see me more and more. But I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Hopefully, we can get these things resolved, and you can do good business in the city. That's all we look forward to.
No, not a problem.
Councilwoman Bowers?
Oh, no, thank you. I just wanted to just further remind everyone, July 2 is the deemed approved deadline for this particular resolution. Thank you. Thank you.
No, no, no questions, no comment.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Chair Daniels. Something in my stomach, it doesn't sit right. I just want to know, why do you need a citation to be in compliance instead of just doing what's right with your properties?
Well, with all the properties I have, believe it or not, I do. It's just that, you know, I have also have a distributing business, which takes a lot of my time. So therefore, you know, my real estate was neglected a little bit. But now I have people taking care of my distributing business, so therefore it'll give me more time with my real estate.
So do you have the capacity to take on this more development with what you're already dealing with?
Yes, because my kids are helping me. They're taking the reins in my distributing business, so that frees me up.
And you had mentioned you buy the buildings up and you rent them or sell them to people from other areas. Why not families or potential home buying dreamers here in Harrisburg?
Well, most of the people are from Harrisburg that I, that I, that get me hooked up with their family members that are moving in to the Harrisburg area. So the main people are from Harrisburg, but their families and relatives are moving from the other areas.
You do realize on record, you had just said from other areas, though.
The main, the main connection that I deal with is already in the city.
No worries. And when you initially had came in front of us a few months ago, you had mentioned you didn't intend to make the amenities in the older units to match the newer ones. You just wanted to install sprinklers. I think that's more of a testament to your character than your intentions. I would just hope, you know, all families renting or buying facilities would have equal amenities, top notch, whatever you can provide. I also understand with private money, it's a bit different. But I just feel as though the families, the residents, the city itself deserves a little bit more. And that's just me being transparent.
Not a problem.
Thank you. No further questions.
Yeah. And just for the record, the standards for our buildings are applicable to every property, regardless of whether they're privately or publicly funded or whether they belong to individuals or corporate or government entities. So before we close, I just wanted to make a general recommendation. Generally speaking, there is a presumption that when applicants come before those body, that they come in good faith. There's also presumption that if someone is being fined for one violation, they can't necessarily be presumed to be intending to violate in the future. However, given the circumstances where we are, where the current applicant has been in violation of our city code since around, there have been allegations of violations since around twenty sixteen. And we have records, more recent records as far back as twenty eighteen. And that the violations were continuous. And was recently found, he was recently found guilty of violating eighty code violations. And there are still some pending matters in the, at the DJ level on other property related violations. I would recommend that, given the history of this applicant, that we can't make a presumption of good faith in the application process and that we, we deny the application. And once the applicant has addressed all of the property issues that he's been fined for and exhausted the appeal processes and the ones that he's appealing, that he resubmit the application. But that's my recommendation, that we vote this application down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Daniels. Thank you, Mr. Pepfley, for being present. I will now entertain a motion to return to our legislative session.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you. We want now resume our legislative session. So we have before us Resolution fourteen of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record again?
A resolution approving a preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan to rehabilitate an existing building into a twenty-two unit multifamily dwelling and construct a parking lot with twenty off-street parking spaces.
Thank you. Council members, are there any further questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution fourteen of two thousand twenty-two? I just have a blanket comment, I guess. I think the suspension of the rules discussion was very clear. I think that Chair Daniels' recommendation was also clear. Eighty violations, other pending violations, the length of time that these violations have taken place. So just for consideration. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Mattson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rawls?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
The vote is seven nay, zero yays. Resolution fails.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Actually, I'd like to make a, a point at the moment.
Okay.
If I may, the same issue apparently exists. I just did my double check on the link and the wrong document is still linked to this agenda, which is why we're technically going to correct and have a revote. So I'm going to recommend the council table this for the evening so that we can simply solve this technology problem. The public has the right to see the documents that are financial before they're voted upon. And they're looking at a different set of documents. And that's just a technical problem.
I agree. Thank you. So just for everyone's reference, this was Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. And we, if you remember, we took action during our June fourteenth legislative session. The resolution passed as amended. There was a technical amendment, Mr. Grover just noted. So we will table this resolution for further consideration. Next, we have Resolution thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C two, P two, Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase Two of the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park.
Thank you. I think there was some discussion earlier. I do see Ms. Ballmer here. Would you like to suspend the rules for discussion, just to clarify?
Yes, I would, I would move to suspend the rules for discussion on Resolution thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Ballmer, if you could please join us. I will turn the floor over to Chair Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
I think, yeah.
Thank you so very much. We, we talked a little bit last week in the, after we submitted the application. We had a series of discussions with DCNR just about the, the application itself and the school and our plans. They encouraged us to apply for two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, which is above their general limit of two fifty. They really liked the project. And what we needed to do in order to sort of leverage that extra twenty-five thousand dollars was come up with five thousand from the city to fulfill that match. This is a one-to-one matching grant. We already have two hundred and seventy thousand in match from the previous, from a twenty twenty-one DCED GTRP grant for this project and also the value of CRW's GSI green stormwater infrastructure work at the site. So we just had to come up with an extra five thousand and then we could suddenly apply for two seventy-five instead of two fifty, which is kind of a great return on investment. So that's why, but when we, I'm so sorry, when we initially submitted the application in April and we passed the first resolution in March, we thought we can only apply for two fifty. So that's why the resolution was written for two fifty. That's.
Thank you, Ms. Ballmer. No, you, you did great. My question would be, are we able to give the five thousand to help increase the limit of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? I don't know if there's anyone who can answer that question.
You can.
Okay.
So you can make a two-part motion. A motion to amend this resolution to increase the number here to two thousand and for, to appropriate five thousand dollars and that the mayor shall determine which source of funds that will be available funds. But there are unencumbered funds, unbudgeted funds, so the mayor would have that leeway. Of course, the final determination would always be for the mayor to say, we will or won't do a grant application. So obviously, she's in favor of the application because she's had it brought before council.
Oh, correct. Okay. So then I just need to make an amendment to increase.
Make a motion that would go into the minutes. Our office would, after the vote, simply do have an amended form of this document or even just write it in that it's two seventy-five.
A question?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Ballmer, I know that we are only addressing this issue because it's the next step and DCNR had a specialized form that needed to be completed. Is there, are there any additional revisions that need to be made to the application itself?
Totally fair question. None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Does any other council members have questions on this resolution? So then I need to make a motion to.
You need to make a motion to, if there's no further discussion, to go back into the legislative session. So I, I will, no problem. I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
I second that. I move that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have now returned to our exec, or excuse me, our legislative session to address Resolution thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you read it into the record one more time?
Resolution thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C two, P two, Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase Two of the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park.
Thank you. This time, I will entertain a motion to increase the amount of the grant application.
So it actually will be a motion to approve the resolution with a condition.
Okay. The condition of the, the new amount. Okay. So is everybody clear? We are approving the Resolution thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two voting with a condition to, for the amount of up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be considered for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase Two of the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park. Everybody clear on that?
And with the condition that this is a five thousand dollar additional allocation, the source of which to be determined by the mayor.
The second condition is the five thousand dollars that would come from the city at the discretion of the mayor from its, its source, funding source. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two and the two underlying conditions? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution thirty-one passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution thirty-two of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-two, twenty twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C two, P two, Community Recreation and Conservation Planning Subprogram for up to one hundred thousand dollars to help fund a Harrisburg City Parks Master Plan.
Thank you. Uh, council members, are there any questions, comments, and concerns related to Resolution thirty-two of two thousand twenty-two?
I had a question, but I don't know if we need to suspend the rules out of legislation. It was about to ratify.
We can, we can suspend the rules if, for discussion. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I move to suspend the rules of the legislative session for questioning.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Grover, I was wondering, do we need to change the wording to ratify since these were already voted on and just being changed due to the DCNR resolution application being submitted with it?
I don't think you have to do it that way. We're really just doing what they've asked or doing a do-over.
Okay. So for, none of the three that we already vote on, just leave them the same and.
They'll, they'll be the same because it's a different document in front of you, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now, I'll entertain a motion to return back to the legislative session.
I'll make the motion to return back to legislative session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. We will now resume our legislative session for consideration of Resolution thirty-two of two thousand twenty-two. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-two passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution thirty-three of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-three of two thousand twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a land owner grantee agreement with Capital Area Green Belt Association, allowing the Capital Area Green Belt Association to construct riparian forest buffers on the city's property.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-three of two thousand twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Finally, we have Resolution thirty-four of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-four. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and National Natural Resources, C two, P two, Rivers Conservation Subprogram for up to one million dollars for funds to restore and rehabilitate the stream bed of Spring Creek.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-four of two thousand twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-five, twenty twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary land development plan submitted by William Wass on behalf of the Catherine Hershey School for Early Learning Harrisburg to construct a new childcare center and make associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty-two will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution thirty-six of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-six of two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary slash final land development plan for fourteen hundred and fourteen oh six Sycamore Street, submitted by George Fernandez Realty Group LLC to construct a four-story, twenty-three-unit building that will provide affordable housing and make associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-six of two thousand twenty-two will also move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Finally, we have Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the twenty twenty-two annual action plan for the City of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships, HOME, and Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, programs.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-two will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion this evening?
Yes, Council President, I have some old business um, for a youth commission. The um, youth commission uh, application went out on July fifteenth. Excuse me, June fifteen, um, on the website and it is still there. And I am calling on all youth and youth of the City of Harrisburg from ages eleven to eighteen who have an invested interest in using their voice to advise the government of the City of Harrisburg on all matters pertaining to them and their peers and to offer recommendations to the city on issues of concern to them and their peers. If this is you or you know a student between the ages of eleven and eighteen that would be interested, please visit the City of Harrisburg website at harrisburgpa.gov and scroll towards the bottom of the homepage. There you will find a scrolling picture bar with youth commission as one of the bar titles. You can click on the youth commission bar and complete the application, which is due by August fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. I can't wait to see who applies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to send out a reminder before the holiday that we will be distributing uh, free meals to the senior citizens this Friday, July first, from five to seven at the Heinz Minnicker Center, free of charge. So anyone who want to volunteer or play a role, please contact me and we'll be distributing those meals once again at the Heinz Minnicker Center from five to seven PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors?
Uh, thank you, uh, President Bowers. Uh, just wanted to note, I know uh, transportation is always a huge issue that we talk about in Harrisburg and trying to improve different modes of transportation. So just wanted to note that I know uh, just yesterday, uh, the governor recently announced an investment into uh, with Amtrak and Norfolk Southern to expand rail service out of Harrisburg. Uh, you know, we have the Pennsylvania that can get residents from Pittsburgh, from Harrisburg up to New York City. And there's also the connection that goes out west once a day. That's expanded to twice a day. I know we had a few residents uh, that used to come to city council meetings quite a bit to talk about uh, how we can work together with government to improve uh, modes of transportation. So just wanted them to note that uh, that expansion is occurring with uh, in conjunction with Penn Dot Norfolk Southern. So uh, they'll have two uh, departures going eastbound um, and from Pittsburgh and then westbound service departed from Harrisburg. Uh, so that's another just way to expand services. It's going to be a benefit to our residents that need to travel out west as well as the region. Also, wanted to note um, and remind folks that on Monday, uh, the city will be having the uh, Fourth of July uh, Food Truck Festival from one to nine PM. So uh, folks who are in town, enjoy uh, the services of those food trucks and uh, have some celebration uh, on uh, for the Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Rawls, for the reminder of the youth commission. Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, for the reminder of the dinners for seniors. And thank you, Councilman Majors, for the rail service expansion updates. Okay, the time is.
Madam President?
Yes?
Just one other reminder.
Okay.
Um, the lock grant money that's done was just submitted. There is a publicly advertised co- comment period that expires on July the fifth. And there will be a public uh, hearing meeting on that in this chamber at the start of your meeting on that uh, action plan, just so the public is aware.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. Okay, the time is seven thirty-nine. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.